I'd like to call the Thursday, June 15th, North Bramford Board of Education meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Roll call?
Chairman Papalhosa?
Here.
Vice Chair Anoprio?
Here.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo?
Here.
Secretary Zachary Canada?
Here.
Kim Dawson?
Here.
Victoria Lanza?
Here.
Stuart Black?
... are the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors? We've got a lot of visitors today, mostly retirees and families, I assume.
Okay, so before we begin the agenda, we're going to recognize our retirees. And at this time, Beth Parker, would please come forward to introduce our first retiree.
Of course.
Thank you. Judy.
All right. It is my pleasure to celebrate the memorable 22-year career of Mrs. Judy Black. Judy's been having a passion within her community that inspires students. She always sees Stuart as best for others and leaves the last impression on her student family. During her tenure, she's been known to facilitate many events, including Pond Day, Great Class American Day, Elder's Day, St. Paul's Day, and most recently, State of Science, an ensuring that students know more. Judy has been a team mentor, technology specialist, has served on a variety of different committees to improve her school. Without her organization, attention to detail and creativity, she said that it would not be as nearly as successful as they have been over the years. Whenever there's a bed run by Judy Black, you'll literally think to yourself, "Oh, nice, I'm worried about that one." It will be spectacular in the long run. In the classroom, Judy has not only helped the students but also their families. Judy has an amazing ability to connect with others, show up for others, and encourage others in all areas of their lives. She's the first one cheering on a student after all the field, the intrastight role, hockey game, and so on. She reaches out with good times in bed and always lends a listening ear to those who need it. Judy Black is not just a teacher; students have longer educational journey, whether a teacher, a mentor, a cheerleader, a momma figure, a papa, and a member of a new supporter. She's been a part of a long haul, as students and families feel that of whatever day they leave their classroom. Lastly, one of the things I'm going to disclose about Judy is her communication style. I always know where Judy stands, regardless of she's at school, and that's because she's a straight shooter, she's very direct, and doesn't shy away from difficult conversations. While we may not have always seen eye to eye on things over the years, I've always provided conversations with Judy with a level of respect for her as well as a wider perspective on the issues at hand. I will miss her early morning talks, discuss all things JHS, they being about a leader, about a listener, and later, school about a place. I know as this chapter closes, she'll be taking with her memories. JHS will never be the same without you Judy, but now you get to enjoy the new life, which is exactly what you should be. Happy retirement. She's hitting a ten. All right, it's also my pleasure to celebrate the memorable 29-year career of Mrs. Linda Kefler. Linda has worked in all four schools over her career here at her campus and has passed on her love of music to countless students. She's taught thousands of students in thousands of rehearsals and hundreds of concerts organizing countless productions. Her attention to detail is incredible, and her friends are always child-suffering and family-loving. During her tenure at JHS, she has been known to facilitate many events, including a grandparent's concert, a festival of arts, or a first-grade musical, she teaches chorus, monthly seasonings, and PTO events, to members here. But what I know most about her is that she doesn't shy away from taking on something else, from trying something new. She would often come to the other summer and start a conversation by saying, "Okay, we'll play before our students this year. Want to try something different?" She would advocate for creative performances and would provide all students with opportunity to showcase their talents and for all families to be involved in the events at her school. One great example of this was our real fish mini musical this year for our first grade students. The musical was a huge undertaking, with tons of props and lots of lights in between my rice by six-year-olds and several different songs performances. Those are not the ways to not only include that student, but also provide parts and performances in a way that highlights students' individual and unique strengths. One of the best messages I have ever received from a parent or a family member in my career came from a grandmother of a student who passed away that she was on tears watching her grandmother perform on stage in her class base because she had seen this support and love from students in the staff. This is what matters for the best loved ones, and we will never forget. To Linda, you'll be greatly missed at JHS, thanks for your dedication, your creativity, your respect for nature, and determination to prepare the best for students. You have not lasted hard in her school, but I'm quite grateful that you actually have been wonderful and will show that to your parents.
Ms. Lee, can you come forward now?
I have the honor of being privileged of speaking around Diane Arquette, and it's meaningful to talk for me because I've known Diane for many, many years. I have the privilege of having Diane actually as a teacher. And I would say... In this, as we add to the topic value, Diane was a special education teacher in an inclusion class that I was in at 10-years-old. I had no idea what an inclusion class it was. I wasn't aware that Diane was there and that anyone in my class was different from me originally. And I think that experience, and that speaks so much to who Diane is and to the career that she's had. She has made such an impact on students in Bramford, and one of the reasons is because she's always been focused on inclusion. Students feel like they are a part of our school, which they are. When Diane came to the high school, I was overjoyed. I was teaching in her first-class classroom, and Diane actually cried and we were neighbors. And so, it was enjoying the attitude inside her. And I remember one of the things that happened that first, I want to say this was the first or second day of school, and Diane, I heard her from a very thin wall say something. I'll never, I'm never going to figure out this stuff. I don't understand how, you know, how you got from elementary and come to that high school. And if I hadn't known Diane as well as I would have, I would have said, "Oh, she's not going to last in this school." But I knew Diane, and she had been with us many years in high school, and we were so, so blessed to have her. When I think back on her career that's well-lived and worthwhile, and exactly, I think what every educator wants as a career like Diane's had, she has made such an impact on our school. She's made an impact on me as an educator and as a former student. And we are going to miss you so much, but you're not going to be gone. Let me see if I can really a little bit. This is the last one, I'm building. But we were completely blessed to have her and the students in our Bramford are so, had such a benefit of heart with her and all the work that she has done with us, improving our unified program and just making our students shine. So congratulations to Diane. We won't miss her.
Rich?
Rich. I want to make sure. It's her turn. It's not about her.
So, if the three retirees, could you just come through and just shake hands with them? Or just make a circle of applause?
There's a lot of papers. Maybe there's a bill.
Or if you want to go around the backside of the doors, just quickly.
Yeah, there's so many cords. I can't take it.
Shake your hands. Thank you. Enjoy your meal.
Congratulations. Enjoy.
Thank you so much.
There you go, right? There you go.
Now, it works. Yes, it works.
This is a rat's ass, isn't it? Was that? This is a rat's ass, the whole lot. How's it looking?
Absolutely nothing.
So retirees, we can officially dismiss you, but we thank on behalf of all, thank you for nearly 90 years of service towards in our community health side, all the classroom. But we appreciate what you've done. You've made us better. You've involved yourselves in the lives of thousands and thousands of children. And obviously, at their early ages, the impact later on that you've seen because of your efforts. It starts in pre-age, you know, and at 22-years of age now, and collectively together, I'm really proud. And I know that now in education, we're struggling to find qualified people, dedicated people, people who stay to the longevity of their career, committed to their communities, and that's hard to find. So, I thank you. I wish you all the best, health, happiness, time with your beautiful families. You eat cheese back here, read. We're always here for you, and please stay in touch with us and reach out and remain in our lives as we would like to remain anywhere. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, because Jen Canales is here. She is the secretary at the Middle School of Philly in Maryland. Could be here tonight, so we appreciate you being here, Jen. Thank you.
She was here last meeting. She showed up very last night.
I'd like to welcome you. I appreciate it. But now you're solo. You're a solo actor. You were in duet last week. Thank you for reminding me. Take it away.
All right, well then, want to do the consent agenda?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the June 15th, 2023 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Second discussion? Got them looking at you?
Yeah, nothing seen of you.
Okay, fantastic. Can we have a roll call though, please?
Yes.
Chairman Papalhosa?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Anoprio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
Scott, your turn.
All right.
I know.
You have the communications briefs in front of you. Obviously, we're not going to go through those. And many of you have been around for the end-of-the-year activities, and we thank you. I know the students and the staff love to see you present, so we really appreciate that. Curriculum instruction, Dr. Wells is here tonight. He's going to talk to you about the post-high-school plan sheet that I believe you have in front of you, Dr. Wells.
Yes.
You're going to have this sheet. And it speaks to each year as we provide the data for the number of graduates, those who have post-high-school plans in either two- or four-year colleges, those that are going into the military or into the workforce. We're pleased to announce that 89% are going on to two- or four-year schools. We have two students that are going into the armed forces and two going into the workforce, and we have a student going to the 18 to 21. Seven of our students are still undecided, and that's okay.
When you track, like, two years, where does trade school stand?
That would go to two.
That would go to two.
Two is a two, yeah. So then we list the schools of where they were accepted, from most competitive down to less competitive or special programs. We've run the data for three years, so you have a baseline for comparison.
That's pretty impressive, how many applied as to how many were accepted. Those numbers are pretty good. I'm impressed. Wow.
And is the list of where you can accept for the three years or just this past year?
No, this is just this current senior year of the 122 of where they were accepted to.
Is there a list that declared majors by chance?
No, we do not track that data.
Besides, they've switched them four times.
Right. A lot of them would be general studies.
Well, you know, it's interesting to know that information.
Yeah.
Because even if they do switch, it's interesting how they left here with the idea of doing something. You know, that's up to the university to sustain that, not a...
A lot of, the majority go to business studies.
Yeah.
They're the highest percentage. And then you'll get the, obviously, the sciences with nursing. We have a large number of students going into nursing in this group.
Yeah.
You know, it's funny, as a mother of an upcoming senior, to look at this, lest it see some of these schools that the kids applying to. Having a little bit of anxiety.
No worries, they all find a place. They all find a place.
This is pretty important. Somebody applied to the Art Institute of Chicago. Wow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wong for the finance report.
Okay, so I handed out the finance report. We are still training on the new payroll system for Munis. We actually had training today, and we'll have some more training tomorrow. I have been able to get some credits for training days that we've already had because we've been going around and around on different issues, and we haven't been gaining any ground. But today, we kind of said, "You need to get this answered." And within 15 minutes, she came back and she had the answer. So I was like, "Well, you know, if it was that easy..."
Right.
"...we need a credit." So I did get confirmation that we will get several days credited back to us so we can use it in other ways or possibly a credit to our overall purchase, whichever it comes to be. So, good for you. So I'm going to have you turn over to the two spreadsheets that I provided for you. The first one, you'll see it looks familiar.
Yep.
If you go all the way to the bottom on the third page, you're going to see an available budget. And right now, I will caution you that that is only because there is still $754,000 of open purchase orders in the system. So, to...
So we're really not negative, is what you're telling me?
No, so to help explain that better, you can look at the next sheet. So I laid it out a little differently, so it kind of, kind of helps. So, the balance for the report right now, which includes open POs, is the 9451. We still need to process and post our final payroll of the year. All our teachers have been paid, all of that is already through the system. But we do have remaining payrolls for our 12-month staff and to finish out any hourly people that have worked between the last day of school and that date. So we're estimating that to be $159,000. And then we have to add back the things that I know that are out there that are not posted yet. So those would be an estimate for employee insurance contributions, the May adult payment, adult education payment from the state, and our two excess cost payments, which, as you remember, in April, when we went to the town council, they said that we would get this year's excess cost credited back to us. So with all of those additions, it actually brings us to a positive of $143,000.
And we can carry that to next year.
What we're going to do with that $143,000 is we are actually going to put a deposit on our DACO contract for next year.
Okay.
Because if we pay our entire contract before September 30th, we get a 1.5% discount.
Okay.
Which correlates to somewhere about $30,000.
Okay. Well, I like the savings idea.
Yeah, so that's what we're, so whatever number is left is going to go to DACO.
Okay, okay, great.
Martha, do you know, like, last year, what our balance was?
So, at the end of June 30th, I always aim to have zero, and that's what it was.
Okay.
But however, when you have open purchase orders on 6/30, that number is going to constantly change.
Right.
Because orders will come in that may be a little less than what you had your purchase order open for. You may have had a blanket that you didn't need, although we're trying to, you know, get people to be as accurate as they possibly can. You may have shipping on something that you didn't anticipate, so that may add a few dollars. So until all the purchase orders are closed out, which is going to be October 1st, we won't know exactly what that number is until all purchase orders are closed out. So that's why I noted at the bottom that it really is, it's a constant fluctuation.
I mean more, like, I'm asking a question in a way of, like, so when we go to town council next year for a budget? To be able to look at, like, well, 2022, like, at the end of June, this is kind of what we were looking at. And now at the end of '23, are we even less than what we were? So are we seeing less and less at the end of our school year? This is something tangible to be able to go to town council with and go, "Things really are costing us as much money. We don't have a huge savings account." Savings account. At the end of the year, like, this giant balance to sit in there. That's what I was kind of trying to figure out.
That really is your actual expenditures and not your open POs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Wong? Okay, we're along. Certified evaluations under Section 1050b of the Connecticut statute, I report to you that all administrators are finalizing evaluations by June 30th, and that will be documented with the state that all teachers, all administrators are in compliance. So that's the good news. As I do each summer, I ask you for the authority to hire. I believe we have three open positions right now that we are actively interviewing, four certified positions. And as you know, as I stated earlier, with the fluctuation in work staff, with people coming and going, and there's times in June, July, August, I might get a resignation.
Do you want us to make a motion?
I do. I'm guessing you're going to support me.
We'll see.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve...
Please support me, Mrs.
Motion to approve that authority be granted to the superintendent to hire certified teaching personnel effective immediately until the September 21st, 2023 Board of Education meeting.
Second, any discussion? Does any, do any of the newer board members have a question on this?
What's the significance of the September 21st date?
Our next meeting.
It's going to summer, probably. You don't want to come for the next one?
What, what, what? Discussing whether we're going to have anything in July?
Well, the point is, if the pool dwindles as the summer goes on, earlier on, you're going to get the bigger pool. So if you find somebody to hire next week, you don't want to wait until July. Somebody else can come in.
When is the school start, though? Is it always then into the school year?
Yes.
Yeah, it's this week, do the same format every year.
Because you never know, somebody might fall out of it.
Right, might leave in August.
Or even at the end of August, somebody decides to retire.
And then who makes up the hiring committee, secretary?
Who makes it up?
Yeah, who's in the hiring?
It would be the building principal. It would be, if it's a high school department chair, content-based. It could be a lead teacher. It could be the special ed director. Obviously, the curriculum director. So there's usually in the summertime, around five to seven. And then if we can bring staff in, we try to as well. So it's really dependent upon the building.
It's my try.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's always, it's always those five that you can count on.
Very good.
Okay. Town manager pending request, I don't have.
We didn't, we didn't have it yet.
Do we have to vote on it?
Can we just vote?
Yeah.
I only second it.
We told you, rain, sea.
Why don't you vote on this, so I can hire?
We'll do a roll call though.
Chairman Papalhosa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anoprio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
On behalf of all the administrators, we thank you. Under town manager pending request, it's really not a request. It's something that I need to bring to the attention of the building committee, and we're going to have to address the new high school and our inability for connectivity for cellular phones inside the building because of the steel and brickwork.
I've noticed that.
There's none. So we are investigating, we are researching, we are costing out a plan. But I'm going to need help from the committee on this because it's quite expensive.
Clearly, you didn't anticipate that.
The disappointment on my end is that the building is spectacular.
Yeah, yeah.
But the biggest part of any building with your safety plan is your ability to communicate. So it's something that is, you know, high priority. We will be ahead of it by the time we start school, but they're going to have to make some decisions, and we're going to need some support on that. So there's, we're not going to be able to function without doing something in the building. It's not, it's just not, it's not good. So, without saying too much.
Okay.
We'll work on it.
Back your arm.
The next piece, while we're on... Is it, are you going to be briefing next week, or next Monday, or when you're talking? We're going to finalize the cost analysis, which we should be pretty close.
They cannot do this study already. To an engineer, if you want a thousand dollars. If the engineer can discuss the parts happening.
Which we're going to do.
To pay a thousand dollars to get a price?
I'm going to do that.
I'm sorry, so we had, we had people come out to study the problem, all right?
To evaluate the building.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to hire it.
We're all through the building, we're all, we're saving money. We're talking about putting in towers, truck jobs on the road.
So...
Eighty-hundred percent coverage of the building.
We are going to pay the $1,000 for this study that we need to do for the engineer. And then I, after I get the results of this study, will go to a greater order to support this.
I don't know if it's a permanent project, so we'll figure that out.
Well, we will, with Gil Bane and with the architect.
Oh, because they're going to come in, yes.
Yeah.
That's right, they're going to be a part of it.
Is it like a $100,000 project?
It'd be a little higher than that.
Like a $500,000 project?
It's less than five but greater than one. It's less than five but greater than one. Safe to say?
Safe to say.
This is kind of, though, I mean, they have foreseen this? I know. I didn't even think that.
I don't want to get too far ahead of this. Once the engineer meet with us, they've already done the initial part, but then once the engineer gets with us, we'll come back with a full report on, this is what we need to do, and this is where we're going because it should have been designed in the plans.
Okay.
Scott, be aware that we have separate ones now for the police department and high school. So ours is next week, and then we won't wait for two weeks after that.
Oh, separate meetings?
But at time we get the engineer in here and do all of that, we'll need a couple of weeks anyway. I suspect- I suspect we'd be able to make an adjustment if, you know, if you have something, just to put another on the agenda.
Yeah, so we separate. But sometimes the police department does discuss. And I call them on it.
Okay?
Okay.
Renovation project, I don't think there's too much more to add. The building is coming down. We're hoping late June, early July, the majority of the building will be down and removed. Then we'll start the process, obviously, of backfilling and starting the foundation work closest to the last part of the building. That will be the tech wing moving into then the gymnasium, which will be that final piece of the building project. So we're, you know, we're looking at, you know, all of next year, obviously, being in the construction phase, that phase two.
When is it anticipated to be done, plus six months?
It'll be next. I don't even want to put a date, Zach. I don't either. Although it should be much, not as contentious the first place. No, it's, the hardest part is done because all of the-
I just wasn't wondering, is it going to be June 2024? Or is it like into, you know, into fall?
But we'll, once we get the entire building down, we'll have a better idea of, you know, because we got caught up a little bit with some, with the power company on shutting everything down, making sure. So we lost a few days in demolition until we are cleared.
Before you're done, right?
Well, we called. We just- Did it figure it out in the gym? Yes. Everything's clear. That is, does it?
That was a piazza.
Everything's clear. Good. Good. All right. So-
Okay.
Okay. Essentially goals, and we can do these in executive session.
Let's add this to executive session.
Yeah. So we'll move back to executive, and I'll bring those in. And then that's it for mine.
Okay. So let's go through committee reports. Marcy, do you have anything on negotiations?
We are meeting, we have some meetings coming up next week. We're still working on three of them.
We finalized the nurses, and it was ratified. That's good news. So we did that in two sessions, and compliments to the nursing representatives that were there. It really went well, and we thought it was very fair.
Thank you, Kim, for doing that.
Yes, thank you, Kim.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep. Appreciate that. Very value-worn.
It was a learning experience for you, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's a whole procedure. You think it's- When I went into it the first time, I had no idea when I was walking in.
I certainly didn't.
One down, three to go. It's going to be a busy summer.
We have some, two or three next week. So we're hoping to wrap up. I think two out of three will wrap up pretty easily. One might take another professional job.
Can we write that in minutes? Wrap up very easily.
Yeah.
Okay. True. Aces?
I'm sorry. I couldn't go to the last meeting. It was the same as one day. So.
Oh, I couldn't miss one day. Building Committee, we've already heard about that, unless there's anything else that Beth and Zach want to share.
Were you going to address the school?
Yes. So a district-wide, not a high school-specific problem with our internet, or really not our internet, is spam. A lot of communications are going to spam. So we've been working on this, and I'm going to have Bruce fill in the blanks. But there's things that go into our spam that we don't get. And then when we're sending out, things are getting lost in spam as well. So where are we at, just to-
So what happened is we got spooked. So someone grabbed an email address that had North Grandford School team preface by something else. And that caused all the other mail servers around us to start blocking us. So that went on for three days ago, four days ago. And from that point, we got started. We started getting bad reputation on the internet. So we started blocking other mail servers. Started blocking mail that we were sending out from North Grandford School server, which is legit. So we contacted the state. We contacted Google.
We were getting bad reputation.
So we cleaned up our reputation. And what's happening in the meantime is people are getting emails that were not what they believed to be true. So they were marketing it as spam. The more spam it gets marked, the more we get blocked.
Oh, God. That's how it works.
So the cloud, the internet, are blocking you. Staff members are putting you down. This is spam. But we're also getting them down. And a lot of people are saying this.
Gotcha. Got it.
So we thought it was clean up, and it still continues.
So how does one clean up their reputation?
Well, it starts right here tonight. You're spamming out there. No, this happened with a communication to Beth where she received an email that I had sent, but then didn't receive one from the curriculum department. And then we found out when Beth phoned us. We said, no, we sent it, and then she went back and found it in spam. And this had been getting better, but obviously, it's still a problem. So.
We have a lot of services that send out emails, not just our school, the school messenger, other applications that send mail out on behalf. And they're also being blocked. So hopefully, things calm down over the summer. It's supposed to be good.
We've been spooked.
Okay. And there's that. All right. Any new business? No new business? Oh, you know what? Let's bring up the July board meeting. Do we need a July board meeting?
Do we need to have one?
Are you asking me?
Yeah. I'm asking both, like, do you need a budget?
If we finalize things, you've given me the authority to hire. You know, there's other things we're discussing tonight. If we get through everything, I would say no.
Okay.
If we needed an emergency meeting for something, I could call you and give you as much notice of it. But that's only if.
Okay. So we'll revisit this after executive session.
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
Real quick, do we have any update on the Board of Ed seminar? In doing that?
Yeah. So Cave, you're more than welcome to go to a Cave workshop, and we would pay for the workshop. So what I can do is put out a menu for you of anything that you'd like. But then we were talking about having our attorney come in and do a workshop, which she's in agreement to, and said that if you'd like to do it, give me some dates around negotiations. She could come in and do a workshop for the board.
Can it just not be on a regular Board of Ed night?
Yes. Yes.
Because I might not be able to attend it.
No. And she was, Rebecca was looking at her calendar with negotiations because she's doing the next three units, fighting it. So if there's a month that you would like to do it in that works for everyone, I can give that to her, and then she would work her schedule around-
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Doing that. But you also can go out to Cave, and we would pay for you to go to a workshop if you wanted to go to one.
And they give a really good look out, too. Like, yeah, so you can reference.
And I can buy the book for you. If you want the book and you don't want to go to it. I mean, just let me know what you want to do.
I thought it was helpful when we had the training and then they gave the book, because then you could reference the book. I still have it in my car.
I think it's, I think you need more than just the book because you have questions.
Yeah. Rebecca would-
And then you had the book to reference.
Right. Because you ask specific questions, you know? And sometimes it's hard when you go to the Cave because there's so many people. Like, it's hard to ask a specific question for you, you know? Relating to something of yours. I sometimes find with the attorney, it's a little bit more-
Yeah.
Oh, really? Okay. Personal.
So I'll be with her next week, a few days.
Because there are, you know, different things for different districts. I mean, you know, big city, inner-city and stuff, it'd be a lot different than-
But I'll put some dates out to you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else for new business? Okay. Visitors impressed? Oh, there's no microphone, is there?
No, that's okay.
That's okay. Mr. Lella doesn't need a microphone.
I was like, there's no microphone. Something goes around the corner?
No.
You don't have to.
So I'm Mary Ellen Lella, and I'm here for the job of music teaching.
Didn't you get my email to spam? You didn't get it. We listened to your audition. You didn't get it. No.
Anyway, I am with the, um, Coach American Historical Society. Dominic is the co-president of that. I am co-president and Veronica class. And we came to Scott and Carter. Actually, I came in the spring when I was going to retire. I was worried about not having anything to do in my life. And I'm really thrilled that I found something to do. They graciously, or had graciously said that they were partnership with the Coach American Historical Society, and they did. In probably February, we had a number of fundraisers in each of the schools. And the administration was just amazing. We had Abby DeTour and Jackie Thurston at the high school along the path. We had Allison Maitpiece with Keith, Cheryl Canada, Cheryl Canada, Jo, and then we had Liz Nichols. And together, they raised $4,300 for the Little Red Schoolhouse. And in addition to that, parents and families were able to become members of the Young Historians. So our mission for this society is to teach, preserve, and build community. And we certainly have over the course of the year. We work with many of the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. They helped us. We've helped them. We've had programs, the Rec Center, et cetera. And we are just beginning our Young Historians for having a community barn dance, hopefully on Saturday. Please create the good weather. I don't know. Whatever. And that is the first event. We're doing it with the Land Trust, the libraries, the Rotary Club, the DPW, and the town. And, you know, it's just a really great joint effort. We're so, you know, excited to be in the schools. We've gone to MBJ at Jerome. We're now known as the Historical Ladies. I know you. You're a Historical Lady. And you also brought the Little Red Schoolhouse in to Jerome. We spent three days at TBES. And, you know, kept excited, little children about history. So we are so grateful for all the efforts in all the schools. And we thank our, you know, Board of Ed, who are so supportive of us, especially Jana and Beth and Victoria. And so, you know, we're very grateful. So we're looking forward to next year.
We are turning away to our goal, the Little Red Schoolhouse.
So we're anticipating that we need to raise about $100,000 at this point in time. We raised almost $10,000 at a fundraiser at Millpond. The town has given us $10,000 from work funds, and then about $4,300 from schools. It hits me in difference, and we're very excited about it. So we appreciate that, and we look forward to doing this.
Is there a way to donate online?
There is.
Can you tell us how to?
Oh, that online.
Is that online?
We're a little hard hit.
I know you're historical, but can you bring that word up?
We have councils with our names. If there's some really active, great skills that would like to help. We've all seen our high school students to help us in the hall.
Do you need more furniture or?
Yeah.
You're good?
Right. I agree.
Now, we-
Computers.
Yeah, we donated.
We had a Capstone student this year. We have an Eagle Scout who's doing a project in the halls. We're really trying to get ourselves out there. And I know you're thinking, she's out there.
I've always felt that way. But, you know, the tech classes, the TV production class, went out and did a site visit. We're going to fly the drone and video the whole process and then have kids involved, hopefully, in some of the restoration, too.
How do you donate without collecting? Do you write a check?
Yes.
She's not checking.
You can write a check out to the Department of Historical Society and take it directly into Hill for a savings bank. It'll deposit it into the-
Really? Specific account?
We can Venmo.
I want to pay.
No, they can.
I'm working on everything for them. We just have, you know, older members. We don't want to discourage our friends or our cheese.
Nope. That's okay. I like you.
So we're looking at it.
Got it. Got it.
And yes, she's a artist for us. The light is really good.
She found what?
She found hoops for us.
They were great. I have a question.
Yes.
It's a farm dance.
What do you do there? Hi, you don't know?
I've never been to a farm dance. No.
A community barn dance on Saturday. There's a hike first at 11 o'clock with the Land Trust, Land Conservation Trust at Harrison Preserve on North Street. And then at 12 o'clock, we have a TJ, TJ Anthony.
Okay.
Should be there. He's ancient. And then for lunches, we don't get chips. And then once at three, we are having a dance caller, Billy Somethin', and he's, he has a following here. So we're dancing.
Like square dancing?
Square dancing. Ee-haw! Bring your hat here. It's really to be two different groups of people bringing animals and different things. Our barn is going to be open.
It's a kickoff for the summer reading from the library.
The kids are reading.
There is a library function. And if you, there are, they answered questions on the library. I'm a little nervous. They jumped all the historical ones. So looking for-
Because our site is historical.
We got it.
Got it.
We got it.
And we use short and use smoke signals that no one understands.
Thank you. Here.
You got to follow that. Good luck.
Good to the board?
I actually did want to comment on good to the board. Promotion and graduation was phenomenal. First of all, we had perfect weather days. We really did. But they were just perfect. They were down to science, you know? The buses, the transportation, bringing people really worked.
The buses, the transportation, bringing people really worked, I saw them, and they were going like quickly, and people weren't waiting too long, so that worked really well.
Yeah, no, it was-
And that really helped a lot of families, because-
And the carts, bringing the handicapped people in, because that's always a concern, bringing the grandparents, and, you know, I felt they were perfect, you guys, Keith, Megan, Todd, Scott here, you guys did a great job, Tracy?
Kids were very well behaved.
Everyone commented how, I missed the beach ball flying around in the air.
Kids were spectacular.
Everyone commented how wonderful our class of kids were graduating, and how respectful and polite they were, and, yeah, so.
That means a lot.
Like, the awards, scholarship night, like, the emotion in that room, the kids were so sweet, and everybody was just teary-eyed at one point or another, and the football state champions were there, and they gave out scholarships, six, I think, of the twelve graduating seniors, it was a really nice night.
It was a good end, a good end to the year, really nice.
And fun day at Jerome was awesome, it went off really well, it was super fun, although my son was-
More fun than yours, actually?
My son wasn't very happy, because Dad said everyone else's kids seemed happy, I got to volunteer, Vicky, you organized a lot of it, so you did a great job.
And Beth and Joe?
And it was, it was gorgeous day out, and, yeah, it was really nice. And then the North Grandford Day was awesome, I got to volunteer the next day for North Grandford Day, I ran the games, which was like the best part of North Grandford Day, I modestly say, but, yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun, and the hoops, we, we really attempted to use the hoop, but it was rather difficult, so I will need to practice for next North Grandford Day, because I couldn't get those hoops a-rolling, so I'll have to work on that, so, um, yes.
The barn, we had to practice.
Yeah, I just have to keep seeing, they're not hula hoops, we're not, we're not hula hooping, so, yeah, so those were great days at Jerome, so.
Yeah.
And field day was amazing at Tocqueville, we'll give Tocqueville a shout-out, too, Joe, because-
I'll be there next year, so.
At TVES, the winner of the highest fundraiser had a field day for two hours, and we had a blast, they were playing old-fashioned games, and made up some of their own with the equipment they had, they were really great, and the interact club had come with Allison Maitkees, they went to the Little Red Schoolhouse, they had games, and then they went into a program about posted mean construction with Don Summers, and they were amazing, I thought, oh my gosh, how are we going to entertain this group, and Carrie Sabeta came along, and Jen, Ted. And, and it was, it was just great, we got such a nice letter from Allison, they were really thrilled with it.
Nice.
It was fabulous.
End on that note. That's about as positive as you can get, that's a great way to end.
So I think we're gonna need to adjourn to executive session.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statutes, as permitted by section 1-206A of the Connecticut General Statutes, to discuss agenda items 9J, Superintendent's contract extension and salary, and 10A, negotiations on affiliated salary increases.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Are we staying here? Um, yes, please. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to increase the Director of Business and Finance salary for the upcoming year at three percent for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Second?
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Chairman Papalosser?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nocchio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Vassano?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to increase the salary of the Director of Technology for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year by three percent.
I'll second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Chairman Papalosser?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Nocchio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Vassano?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to extend the contract, the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Scott Schoolmaker's contract through June 30th, 2026.
Second?
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Chairman Papalosser?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nocchio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Vassano?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to increase the salary of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Scott Schoolmaker by three percent for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Chairman Papalosser?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nocchio?